All right, good evening. It's 6:00 PM, April 12th, 2023. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to also announce that this meeting is being televised live on local channel 18. Could all rise will say the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, does anybody have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, you can check in, Mary Ann, and you'll have three minutes to make a comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. All right, I'm going to ask for public comment on each hearing tonight at the end of the presentation. Okay, Jim Gould and Charlie Reddy are absent tonight, so sitting on the first hearing will be our four regular board members as well as Sharon. Sharon, would you read the first continued hearing, please?
425 Nathan Ellis Highway, owner Mashpee 151 Properties LLC, request a modification to an existing special permit, SP 97-73, under 174-24C9 and 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of 1,800 square foot addition to the rear of the existing retail building on property located in the R3 and C2 zoning district, map 72, Ossel 56, Mashpee, Mass., continued from March 22nd, 2023, hearing at the request of the attorney.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Mashpee 151 Properties LLC for this request for a modification to an existing special permit. We were before the board at their last meeting to go over the project. The biggest thing that came out of that meeting was a peer review by town engineer. With me tonight, Mark Dibb from Cape and Islands Engineering. He submitted, all the plans were submitted to Ed Pesci for review. There was some back and forth and revisions made to the plans based on Ed's comments. I believe that a letter came in from Ed late today or this afternoon stating that he was satisfied with the revisions that were made. So with that, I will be happy to answer any additional questions from the board, but I do think that, you know, the biggest concern for the board was the stormwater management and the drainage swale and making sure that it was reviewed by Ed. And again, either myself or Mark are here to answer any questions, but, you know, I think the letter from Ed, you know, speaks for itself that he was, he's satisfied with the engineering of the drainage.
Okay, actually, I have an email from Ed, and it stated 4 o'clock this afternoon. And it says, "Hi, Mary Ann. Please find attached my updated engineering review for the project at 452 Nathan Ellis Highway. Just about everything is resolved except to minor issues. Discussion with the board regarding the need for landscape plan and receipt of a signed and dated stormwater O&M plan."
So we do have a stormwater O&M plan for the board. You know, I read Ed's comments about the landscape plan. He said it wasn't critical. I guess I'd leave it to the board. I mean, there really isn't any landscaping to be done. We're going to reseat anything that's been disturbed, but, you know, we're not look, we're not, there really isn't any landscape plan that would be proposed.
And again, Mark Dibb with Cape and Islands Engineering. And when we received Ed's initial comment letter, he did, you know, ask that landscaping be looked at by us and the board. I did respond, just saying that the work is in the rear of the building. Everything outside that work on the rear and around the basin is existing vegetation. So I did respond feeling, noting that we did not feel additional landscaping was needed. So it's up to the board to deliberate on that further.
As I said, we're trying to keep leaving.
So are you taking down any vegetation in the back?
Where the drainage swale is going, there'll be vegetation taken, taken down, and where the parking is being moved to will be vegetation, but removed. But other, but most of that's disturbed already.
Correct, and there's still, at a minimum, 20-foot buffer, natural, and it's actually 40 feet, the paper road there. And then there's additional vegetation even on the abutters property, but yes, the basin is in natural vegetated area, but there's a minimum of 40-foot buffer around that.
Well, back on April 11th, it was in a butter who had some concerns.
Yes.
And...
That was read in earlier, right?
I'm not sure, was it read in?
Is it the same one? Is it a different one?
It's the same one. Sharon, I'm going to have you read this in if you would.
Okay, yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, it's dated March 8th. It's from Joanne Peters from 54 Saskas Road, Mashpee, Mass. Dear Sir/Mann, I am writing to request a continuance of the public hearing on the proposed project that is scheduled for March 8th, 2023. As in a butter of the proposed project, I have concerns about the impact it may have on my property and my privacy. I would like to take this opportunity to express my concerns and request that the board instruct the project proponent to provide adequate information to fully consider the scope and scale of the proposed project proposal. My primary concern is that the proposed project may infringe on my privacy. The recent Sherman Williams project has already infringed upon my privacy, leaving my backyard exposed. Another project that may diminish my property value and further infringe on my privacy is a cause for concern. As in a butter, I have not been given the opportunity to communicate with the project proponent and express my concerns. I believe that this lack of communication is a major issue that needs to be addressed. Furthermore, I received notification of the public hearing on March 8th by a letter dated March 6, 2023. Sufficient advanced notice was not provided, and this has left me with limited time to prepare my comments and concerns. I strongly believe that there should be adequate time and opportunity for all abutters to express their concerns and have them addressed. Considering these concerns, I request the board grant a continuance of the public hearing on the proposal, proposed project. This will provide an opportunity for the project proponent to communicate with abutters, provide adequate information to fully consider the scope and scale of the project, and to provide an opportunity to mitigate abutter impacts. I suggest that the project proponents provide adequate vegetative offers and/or fencing to address my initial concerns. In summary, I request a continuance of the public hearing on the proposed project to address these potential other concerns of neighbors. This project may infringe upon the residential portion of the neighborhood, and I believe it necessary to take all possible steps to ensure that the impact on the neighborhood is minimized. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Please let me know if you require any additional information. Cecily Joanne Peters.
This was, this was continued from March 8th, so it's been continued for over a month, and I believe we talked about this last time.
Yes, correct.
So I'm thinking that some maybe abavities behind the...
I mean, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I can let Mark, but we're not, as we had talked about, and I know Ms. Peters is here tonight, and we, you know, spoke about the project this morning, before the hearing.
This is where our boundary line is, right here. So all of this is remaining. So I don't know that any arbivites are going to do anything more than what's already there. You're going to have about a 50-foot vegetative buffer that's being, remaining natural from here to here, and then there's additional buffer, natural vegetation on the, on the abutter property, but, you know, we're not touching anything from here now. So I don't know that putting arbivites here is going to enhance any buffers, because as I said, we're leaving all of this natural.
Yeah, but you're, you're taking out some vegetation.
We are, yes.
And what happens if somebody exercises or writes a mass of bogav and cuts it for access?
On Wampanoag?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Wampanoag, yes. Then also, my point is between Wampanoag and your building, on your property line, that could then create a scenario where somebody who has access to Wampanoag in the back says, "I'm going to clear some trees so that I can drive down Wampanoag Paper Road," right? All of a sudden, you no longer have any type of vegetated separation.
I guess I can't control what somebody may do, but my client owns to the...
Well, I may have rights, I may be able to do that, as you know, right? I might be able to go over there, start clearing, because I want to get back to someone's lot in the back, because it's public access.
Well, my client owns the center line, Ms. Peters owns the center line here, Sherman Williams owns the center line here, so I don't think that...
And our client owns all the way back too, as well, to the roadway, all four.
I think that's a little bit outside of the scope of things we, you know, would normally take into account, you know, whether, you know, that Wampanoag has never been used, and there's access in other, in other ways.
Well, just because it hasn't been used doesn't necessarily mean that it won't in the future, as we're on set.
Uh, I understand.
And we've got some neighbors in an abutts residential lot.
That's correct. Well, I guess I'll let the neighbor speak to her concerns and whether we've adequately addressed them, you know, through our conversation.
Does anybody have a comment on this? Sir? We'll let them talk first. We'll continue. Come right up. And if you would, your name and address for the record.
Joanne Peters, 54 Saskas Road.
You have a letter, right?
Yes.
So where are you located, if you could?
On that map, can you find where your house is? You could point to your house.
Yes, by the way that he had it before, so I am right here.
Actually, there's quite a bit of vegetation, isn't there?
Well, it depends on the season that you're looking at. So it could be during the winter, it could be spring.
Are those evergreens? Scrub pines?
Pines, yeah. There are some evergreens around my area here, but you can see that there is a path and there is a roadway. And this is what we were just talking about, is that right here, I know Andy had mentioned to have the, the parking area slanted towards the building, because right now, I mean, we can see it, right?
Yeah. Grab the mic if you would, because you're on TV and they can't hear you.
Oh.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so this is my house. Andy's market right here, right now, the parking spaces are parallel, so when people pull in, you can see the lighting in my house sometimes. So he's actually going to be doing it diagonally. Right here is a, it's like a path that the neighborhood uses to go to Andy's.
It's the paper road, right?
No, there's a path, and then there's a paper road, too. So there's like two. And this area right here, we were just commenting that you could see right across as far as the landscaping goes, so.
Can you see across now?
Yeah.
Say the winter time, can you see through now?
I can. I can see actually how many cars are actually parked on the side.
So what you're saying is they take more out, that you're moving more faster?
Well, he's saying that he wants to come back this way. I, I, I mean, am I wrong on that? I mean, you're, you're saying that you're not going to cut this area down even more, because that's, this area right here is where I can actually see right across.
So I don't mind your show, but...
So again, the, the road layout is here.
Got it.
So nothing below this is being touched. And I think with respect to the parking spaces, what we're suggesting is, the way they're slanted is now you'll back out and go this way, where now you could go this way. So we're trying to mitigate that. There's also a light pole here that's being eliminated, and we're going to have downshooting lights on the side buildings, so that should hopefully mitigate, you know, lessen the impact of any lighting on this side of the building. You know, I'll defer to Mark on the, on...
Along, along here.
Yeah, so the Sherman Williams is complete now. And just a little background, there's, there's three lots in this square in between, there's four roads on every side. There's our lot, goes all the way back to Saskas or whatever that is, and, you know, and Massasoit, and then there's the, the neighbor's lot, and there's Sherman Williams. You know, there's no, no other entity that would need any kind of access through here. Again, we have, our property comes along here, jogs down actually to the middle of Wampanoagav and comes over, so there's a natural 20-foot we're not touching, there's another 20-foot we're not touching, and then there's the neighbor's existing vegetation. And, you know, this work is done. There are some existing mature oak trees along here, planted along here. We don't have to remove those. And all this angle parking is going to ensure this is one way. Right now, these are all 90 degrees, so people can come in and aim their lights at the neighbor's house. That won't happen anymore. With, with these being angled, people are going to clearly, it can't happen, obviously.
And it's only one-way traffic.
Correct. It's one-way going this way, and there's no reason someone should be trying to come in and turn around.
Do you anticipate taking down any additional vegetation?
Yes, there's a drainage basin right here.
I, I get you there, but on the right hand side, I should be more specific, on the right coming in.
Uh, no, the, the existing trees that are there can stay. They've been, they're on the plan, it's easier to look...
Because it seemed to me if it's inbound traffic that she's worried about, which she should be, if you're not going to take down any more vegetation, there shouldn't be an increase in viewing or disturbance.
The main problem she has is when Sherwin Williams was allowed... My name is Brian Anderson. I own Andy's Market and Mashpee 151 Properties LLC. When it was allowed to build the paint store there, they put two arbivites in. And briefly, if I could show you from the dumpster, that's her house. Also, with all that clearing... And this was the permit that was allowed by the appeals board. With all that clearing, she now looks directly at my parking lot, existing, and that are now going to be at a different angle.
Right.
If the board would like, I'll plant 10 arbivites where they should have been planted either on her property or Sherman Williams, so she doesn't have to look at my building. I wish it had been done when Sherwin Williams was here.
That sounds like a pretty fair offer.
In all due respect, I do want to say that I did send an email also regarding the Sherman Williams to see if they could, well, not directly to Sherman Williams, but to the town here to find out if they could help with some kind of barrier, and I never received a response because it was trash that was coming through the back of my yard. There's people that cut through, you know, because they're used to the cut through to Andy's. So I, I do honestly think Andy, well, it's not Andy, it's Brian, I always call him Andy. You know, if he, if he says that he could help out in that way, I really do think that he would, but I really think that it should have been Sherwin Williams that should have stepped up at the time.
We can't talk about Sherman Williams.
I know, I understand that, and I think with the letter that I had written, that was before the hearings were actually, you know, moved.
Continue.
Yes, thank you. I think the biggest thing is, again, it's the vegetation, not being able to have the privacy is, is the bottom line.
So, I'm sorry. So he just mentioned he would be willing, as a good neighbor, to plant up to 10 arbivite on your prop, either Sherman Williams, your property, probably would make sense to plant them on your property, so you don't even have to ask Sherman Williams, would that work for you?
Yes.
I think that's a great way to...
Sounds like a good compliment.
But just to clarify, to plant them on...
Her property.
Her property.
No, not Sherman Williams. I'll tell you why, because he's going to, someone's going to have to reach out to Sherman Williams to negotiate and figure that out, and corporate Sherwin Williams might be somewhere. For me, the easiest way to deal with it, if I were you, my recommendation is to have this gentleman who stepped up to the plate, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And, and allow him to do that on your property.
Yeah, right on the property line, that type of thing.
As far as I'm concerned, that's very well done. Thank you, sir.
That's above and beyond.
Great solution. Does that make sense to you, ma'am?
Yes. Yes, it does, thank you.
I have two questions, if I may.
Sure.
So two questions, I'm, so I'm far less concerned about vegetation at this point than I was prior to this discussion. So landscaping, in reference to Mr. Pesci's letter, I'm, I'm okay with. Two things, the O&M plan, been a pet peeve of mine sitting on this board for years, because you present a plan to us, and I know it's part of the record, goes in the special permit finding, whatever, right? And never gets tracked, and I, I drove around Sunday looking at various approvals of this board, and I'm aware of two or three locations that the drainage has totally changed and doesn't exist at this point, meaning rain guards, et cetera. I'm saying the following, I'm going to start an Excel spreadsheet, and in my note, in my, or I, if I motion, if I'm asked to make one, I'm going to include something that, to the effect that there has to be a report given that follows this O&M to this board. Frankly, I'm going to create an Excel spreadsheet, and I'm going to track every single thing that gets approved, and when I'm off this board, I'll hand it over to the next person, and we'll make certain that this type of stuff gets tracked from here on out. Because you make statements, and I, I get it, like inspect basin after every major storm event, typically a storm of one inch of rainfall, and at least four times a year. Who does that? No, I'm sorry. And I'm not, I'm, it's my thing, right? Because if this isn't done, the neighbors will pay a price, as you, as you're aware, right? And other people will pay a price.
I agree with your concern, and it will be part of the project, and I'm happy to say the property manager is the other person sitting back there, and he just told me he read it entirely, so that's, you know...
And I'm not questioning this individual. It seems like, and I've seen his operation for years, he does a great job where he's at. I'm sure he's an incredible guy. I just see, you know, plans like this, and they just get buried and nothing, and so I'm just letting you know. I'm going to put this in an Excel spreadsheet, and everybody else that comes in front of this board, I'm going to put in a spreadsheet, and I'm going to go down the spreadsheet, and I'm going to put little trip points in it, and I'm going to be able to figure out, after a one-inch year storm, if I don't get notified, or this board doesn't get notified, because the motion's going to say that this board will be notified, this O&M, we don't get notified, somebody's going to be in default to their permit.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Mr. Chairman? I'd be more than happy to do that.
Yeah, but we'd be sending notifications to...
Well, just send, if you want to send it to David, and David, you can send it to me, and I'll be more than happy to track it. That's fine, but somebody needs to be on top of this stuff, because we've got it all over town. And my second issue is the CCB between the parking, landscape area, the parking and your lot 2196. If you look at the grades, and I'm not checking, I'm not questioning Mr. Pesci, he's very good at what he does, I was concerned that the top of the CCB there, if you set that a little bit too high, the water's just going to back up right over your lot 2196 and go into Sasa, whatever his road, and then flood the back. I was concerned about that one spot. About halfway down between, right where it says, right where the, where the letters are, CCB on that, on that back line?
Yep.
If right there, that's, if you look at your grades, existing and proposed, if that CCB is high, you're going to create a water situation all the way across, I can't even say it, Sasa, whatever it is road. So what you're, I'm just, I want you to take a look at that, please. I'm in favor of this proposal, this presentation. I just want you to take a look at that, because frankly, I just don't want people on the other side of that road getting negatively impacted. It would seem to me that's a critical, critical location when you look at the existing grades and proposed grades. Do you concur?
Yes, it's a critical location. There is the 50-foot or 50-spot shot near the, the letter CCB.
Yep.
And our rim is at 48.5, you know, that's a foot and a half.
But if your CCB is six inches high, I'm just concerned about that top of that burn there.
Yeah, I mean, it, it should be built per plan, so if it's built per plan, I'm confident with it.
I'm just bringing up an issue that if we get a complaint somewhere down the road, or the zoning board's office gets a complaint that there are people getting cluttered in the back, it would seem to me that's probably going to be the area that's going to be an issue.
And, and as noted in Ed's review, and Ed actually requested that the stormwater be designed to, it's called Atlas 14 runoff numbers, and those are larger than what we've normally done, so on top of everything, it's designed to the 100-year storm for...
As long as it gets to the basin, though. But I'm okay with it. Enough said, I'm fine. I'm fine with it.
Do you need to address that in a motion?
I don't think so. I'm, I'm just making a statement to the design engineer that there's an issue there, that it's, someone didn't pay attention to the CCB at that location. As far as I'm concerned, the only thing that I'd like to include in the motion from my own statement is this, in reference to this O&M, has to be, and David, it's up to you whether it comes to this board or you, it's your, your call, but I, I'm going to keep an Excel spreadsheet, and I'm going to look at every single trip point. We have a one-inch storm, I'll be able to look down my spreadsheet and see who's supposed to be reporting to us and who's supposed to be checking their, their bases.
I, for one, think it should go to David, and then he can send you a report.
Totally fine with that. And, and I will keep that spreadsheet, share it with you, David, and anyone else who wants to see it.
I agree with you.
And that way, I, because I can tell you, three places I went to over the weekend, there's no more, no more drainage in those locations, not, and they went to this board, and this board has O&M on them. That's great.
Yeah, there's no follow-up.
Yeah, there's no follow-up, and I, and I understand why. I mean, listen, it takes time, money, and effort, and I get it, I understand. So I'm fine. Enough said.
Anybody else in the audience? Questions or comments on this?
I'm sorry.
Chris, did you have any, anything else to add?
No, nothing to add on my end.
Anybody on the board have anything to...
Comments?
Yeah, any, before we get to the comments, any questions or concerns? Yeah, let's do the comments.
All right. Conservation Department, 425 Nathan Ellis Highway, not in Wetlands jurisdiction. Border Health, 425 Nathan Ellis Highway, Title V inspection needed for increase of footprint of facility. Jack Phalen, Fire Chief. To all, I have reviewed the plan and the comments from Ed. I am satisfied with the answers. Thank you, John F. Phalen, Fire Chief. And that's...
That it?
That's it.
Anything final? Okay, Ron, we need to close this public comment.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public comments for this public hearing.
We have a second.
Duck it.
All right, Bill seconds. Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay. Any further discussion before we vote on this? Okay, Ron, would you make a motion on this hearing?
I would like to make a motion that we issue... I would like to make a motion that we issue a modification to an existing special permit, SPE-97-73, to Mashpee 151 property, that 425 Nathan Ellis Highway, under Section 174-24, open paren C, close paren, open paren 9, close paren, and 17417 zoning bylaws left of construction, an 1,800 square foot addition. Can I get stopped for a second? There was some disparity. Is the 1,800 correct? I just wanna make sure it's correct. There was 2,000 discussed. I don't wanna say the wrong number.
Yes, 1,800.
It's in your best interest that it's right.
Yes, 1,800.
Okay, good. 1,800 square feet addition to the rear of the existing retail building, a property located in R3 and C2 zoning districts, map 72 parcel, 56 Mashpee, Mass., with all the conditions. One, order to determine that the applicant meets all conditions of a modification of a special permit under Mass. General Law 48, Section 9. Two, site plans prepared for Mashpee Properties LLC, Project 425 Nathan Ellis Highway, Mashpee, Mass., date February 3, 2023, scale one inch, it was 20 feet. Page one, existing conditions. Page two, layout plan. Page three, grading and drainage plan. Page four, photometric plan. Page five, detailed sheet, revised date 3/29/2023. Add photometrics. Visiting revisions per comments prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering. Three, drawing plans addition to Andy's Market, 425 Nathan Ellis Highway, Mashpee, Mass., date 3/31/2023. Drawing title, existing elevations drawn by J.J. M., project number 2304. Sheet number AB1, as-built. Sheet number A1, drawing title, proposed elevations, schematic design prepared by GM Petro Architects, stamped and signed by Lois, Louis F., GM Petro, number 4929, registered architect, found with map. Four, condition on all town comments, town department comments read into the record. Five, condition on Pesci Engineering Associates peer review dated March 2023, and all answers to said Pesci's comments also read into the record, including but not limited to fire comments. Number six, prior to the request of a special, of a building permit, the applicant shall issue a working capital account amount of $5,000. The check shall be issued to the town of Mashpee to be utilized to pay for the initial peer review and for future peer review inspections and sign-ons. Number seven, subject to the applicant's goodwill of installing 10 arborvitae on the Butters property, what is your name, miss?
Joanne Peters.
Joanne Peters property. And you're okay with that 10 arborvitae, sir? And again, I thank you. And also, subject to the applicant's ongoing review of his O&M drainage plans, and any significant, any trips or tasks that are outlined in that report need to be promptly submitted, as per this plan, at plan, to the zoning enforcement office. And will be, if not properly tracked and pursued, will be an integral part of this permit.
And if not done properly, will be a violation of this permit.
Ditto.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Scott's second. Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Nice project.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And thank you for stepping up with the arborvitae.
Well done, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
All right, sitting in the next hearing will be Brad. And Sharon, would you read the next continued hearing, please?
90 Papaneson Island Road. Owners Brendan P. Giblin request a special permit under 17417.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and replace it with a new single-family residential structure with associated pool, detached garage, with guest suite above of the property located in an R3 zoning district, map 106, parcel 34, Mashpee, Mass., continued from March 22, 2023, hearing at the request of the attorney.
Sharon, I think we have a letter.
I have a letter from Christopher J. Corain dated April 10, 2023, in regards to 90 Papaneson Island Road. Dear Chairman Ferbush, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that Wednesday, April 12, 2023, hearing be continued to May 24, 2023. Thank you for your attention. Very truly yours, Christopher J. Corain.
Okay. Any comments on this before we...
I have one.
Go ahead.
Mary Ann, are we going to extend this beyond the normal statute? Are you sure? Okay, I don't want it to go in...
Time barges.
Exactly.
Yeah, should I just ask Chris Bush?
Sure.
I would presume you're extending because you continue to discuss this application with conservation. Is that correct?
In part. Conservation, as you might have seen from the comments, denied the project. But, you know, and so not to prejudice my client's rights at zoning, given, you know, potential zoning changes, he may, you know, I don't know what the strategy is for, to deal with the dial, but if there is any type of appeal, and there, this comes back before this board, I wanna make sure that I protected my client's rights.
If I could just say, as one member of the board, this just says another reason why obtain your approval from conservation before you come here, because if we would have approved conditionally...
Right.
I think, I think it's imperative that we at least get something from Drew or someone like we have in the past, like, you know, move forward, board, if you want, or something. As one member.
Yep, no, understood. I mean, the only, the issue...
Couldn't agree more.
This just strengthens that.
Right. The issue that we run into now is that conservation is requiring us to apply with you before they will...
Yeah, but you could apply and extend, right? You could, you cover that. I'm just...
I understand what you, I agree with you, and I understand what you're saying.
Between that and the, and the extension between 100 to 150, which puts it even more in peril, I sit there as one member, again, saying that it's imperative that you at least get a thumbs up from Drew or somebody that, for me.
Yeah, and I'd advise anybody who's dealing with conservation that that's the approach.
And I hope the word gets spread out there amongst other attorneys and applicants.
Right. And by the way, I, for one, I rely on the opinion of the Conservation Commission. They know a lot more about those kinds of issues than any of us on this board do. So we have to rely on them. That's why we want them to give us their opinion before we make a ruling. It's always been a juggling act for years, but...
And as you know, Drew a couple of times has said, you know, I'm okay, you can move forward as a ZBA.
Right.
Which is great. I mean, I have no problem under that theory. Drew carries a lot of weight with that, whether he listens to the board, historically, he listens to Drew. As one member, I'm usually okay with it.
Right.
Anybody in the audience have any comments? All right, Ron, would you make the motion to close the public comment?
I would like to make the motion to close the public comment for this specific hearing. You're in front of us right now.
I'll second.
No, no, don't close it, just continue.
Oh, you're right.
No, we're talking the public comment.
Yeah, just, well, yeah, but if you extend, we can't close the public comment, because they could change their application and...
It could come back, this, presumably, it could come back before this board under this project. So you don't wanna close, you just simply wanna continue it. You don't wanna close the public comment.
I will retract my motion.
Okay.
Make a motion.
When do you extend, when the extension, when are you asking?
May 24th.
May 24th? Are you looking for a motion with the chairman?
Yeah, please do.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's attorney, Chris Corain's, request for 90 Papaneson Island Road, Brendan P. Giblin, extension up until May 21, 24, 2023.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry?
Second.
Sharon. Okay, well, Sharon, you're not sitting.
I'm on my kid's second.
Brad's sitting on it. All right, so Scott's second. Brad, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
Yes.
The second man isn't here.
Very good. Easy now. Nothing to say. All right, Sharon, would you read the first, oh, before we do that, George, you're gonna sit on this next hearing.
Good.
And Sharon, would you read the first new hearing?
25 Menucha Road. Owners Paul J. and Catherine M. Thurston request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 for the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of an in-ground pool and patio on property located in an R3 in Papaneson Overlay District, map 123, parcel 10, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay. We also have a letter from you. Should we read it in?
Yes, you should.
Okay, Sharon, would you read the letter in?
I'm getting this. You got it? All right. It is dated April 7, and it's from Christopher J. Corain, in regards to 25 Menucha Road. Dear Chairman Ferbush, as you know, we represent the owners of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that Wednesday, April 12, 2023, hearing be continued to April 26, 2023, if the project is still subject to conservation review. Thank you for your attention. Very truly yours, Christopher J. Corain.
So this project is still being reviewed by conservation. I believe they have closed the hearing. They are going to be deliberating it on their April 22 meeting. So if it were to be approved at April 22, we could present it before this board on the 26th. That's why we requested the hearing for the 26th.
Good move. Very good.
Agreed.
Any comments out there? Okay, Ron, would you like to make a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Chris Corain's request of an extension of his 25 Menucha Road property, as outlined in his April 7, 2023, letter. Said extension is up till and including April 26, 2023.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
George's second. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, Scott is out on the next one. So sitting on this one is gonna be Bob and Sharon, as well as the three regular board members. So Sharon, would you read the next new hearing, please?
18 Strawberry Lane. Owners William P. and Judith S. Ludwig request a special permit under 174-17.1, 174-17 of the zoning bylaws in Mass. General Law C48, Section 6, to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 112, parcel 101, Mashpee, Mass.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair members of the board. For the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing William and Judith Ludwig, owners of property 18 Strawberry Lane. With me tonight is K. Marshall Works of, K. Marshall Works Design. He's the architect for the project. Mr. and Mrs. Ludwig are also here in the audience as well. So as the hearing notice recites, we are seeking a special permit under 17417, 117, and Chapter 48, Section 6, to raise and replace a single-family dwelling in the R3 zoning district. Important to point out, as we all know, this is not in a flood zone. So there are no coastal flood zone implications for this project. As I say, this is in the R3 zoning district. A little bit unfortunate for the Ludwig's, every other house on Strawberry Lane is within the Papaneson Overlay District, except for this one. So the neighbor is, so we're just outside, so we have to meet the R3 requirements, as opposed to the Papaneson Overlay District requirements, so...
So it's down to 20% lot coverage.
It is down to 20% lot coverage.
Got it.
So this lot fronts on both Strawberry Lane and Spoon Drift Way, so we have to meet both 40-yard, both 40-foot yard setbacks. We are a 12,885 square foot lot, so we are, it's a non-conforming lot size-wise. Minimum lot size in the R3 is 40,000. Additionally, this existing structure does not meet any of your minimal dimensional requirements. We do not meet your front yard setback to Strawberry Lane, where it's currently 23.2, 40 feet is required. We do not meet your front yard setback to Spoon Drift, as it is currently 24.9, again, 40 feet is required. We don't meet either of your side yard setbacks. The northerly side yard is 14 feet, where 15 is required, and the southwesterly side yard is 10.9 feet, where 15 feet is required. Also, the lock, the current lock coverage is non-conforming at 22.7%. So we're already non-conforming. So in all those areas, this is a non-conforming structure. The proposal, and just to say something about the house, I don't know if anybody's ever seen the house, it is quite a unique structure. It is your 1970s structure. I sent some pictures. It's a square house with a hole in the middle of it. And there's a pool on the first, on the, on the, on the first floor. So it is quite a unique structure, and certainly one that I think the Ludwig's are happy to replace and rebuild. So I just wanted to throw that in there, because as I say, it is a very unique structure. So the proposal, so the proposal will be eliminating two of the nonconformities. So both side yard nonconformities, here and here, will be, will become conforming. So we'll, we'll be at 19.7 feet at the northerly side yard, and 15.5 feet at the southwesterly side yard. So two nonconformities being eliminated. Both the front yard setbacks are being improved. So to Strawberry Lane, we're going from 23.2 to 30.4, and from Spoon Drift Way, we're going from 24.9 to 27.8. And with respect to the lot coverage, we are decreasing the lot coverage, so we're going from 22.7 to 20.37. So those three nonconformities will still exist, but all three of them will be lessened from what's existing.
One question.
Yes.
What was the setback from Strawberry going to be?
Strawberry Lane is existing 23.2, and we're gonna be 30.4.
31.4.
31.
I'm sorry, 31.4.
Thank you.
So, and, and so in that vein, I think we're making substantial improvements to what exists. No new nonconformities are being created. There is sufficient parking, there's a garage as part of this project, so there is certainly sufficient parking. And I would suggest to this board that this will be a, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists, given the fact that we are eliminating two nonconformities, and the three remaining nonconformities are all being improved. And if you look at the surrounding area, I sent you some pictures, this redevelopment is certainly consistent with what you see on Spoon Drift across the street. So in that, in that vein, again, I would suggest that it will not be substantially more detrimental. This will be a new house that is building code compliant, where the existing house is not building code compliant. A new Title V system is being installed as part of this project. I know there were a couple of questions that came up. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was thinking of my other project, but, and there are drywells on this project, so all roof runoff will be captured onsite as well. So with that, I am happy, and we meet the height requirements, the height is 28 feet from average grade. So we are under the 35-foot maximum allowed in the R3 zoning district. So with that, I'm happy to... So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I have one, quick one.
Yep.
Why are you asking for relief under both 174-17.1 and 174-17.2?
Given the potential for changes in the bylaw, I am covering all my bases.
Okay. You answered the question.
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
Anybody?
No. I'm good with all the improvements.
Yeah. So yeah, it's Bob and Sharon on this. Bob, any comments, questions? Sharon?
No, I see this as an improvement.
It's pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I went over and took a look at the house.
Yeah.
Saw the swimming pool in the middle of the house.
Right. It is, it's quite unique.
Very unique. So yeah, the only question I didn't have was the drywells, because it does, it's an elevated lot, and everything seems to run off towards the water the street and houses below it, but it's good to hear that the drywells are going to be there.
Yeah, there are, yeah, drywells are proposed.
They should be, they're shown on the plan. Nothing. No questions.
I don't have anything. It's pretty straightforward to me. I think there's, every single aspect is an improvement.
Right, absolutely.
All right, before we read the comments in, anybody in the audience have any questions, concerns, comments? Nothing? This is going very simple. Okay, Sharon, would you?
I'm nervous.
Sharon, would you read con, con and Board of Health, please?
Conservation, 18 Strawberry Lane, no wetlands jurisdiction. Board of Health, 18 Strawberry Lane. Approval for three-bedroom floor plans submitted electronically March 30th, 2023. No doors on the den with case opening on first floor, encased opening to room on second floor labeled playroom slash sewing room.
Emphasize.
Yeah, so it's a three-bedroom maximum.
Correct, yeah. There was some, there were some concerns raised with the initial plan by the Board of Health. We resubmitted revised plans that they were, that, and I talked to Zach today, and he was satisfied with those revisions. That is, three bedrooms.
All right, no comments out there, huh? Boy, this is easy. Ron, would you like to make, oh, well, before we do that.
Yep.
Let's make a motion to close the public comment.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public comment for the hearing in reference to 18 Strawberry Lane.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Sharon in on this one, so good. Sharon's, Sharon offers the second. Bob, how do you vote? Sharon?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Great, thank you so much.
Great pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's just close the hearing.
Oh, sorry.
It's, it's a new process. It's a new process.
Brand-new process.
Counselor, we're doing it different.
It's okay. I'll get, I'll, I'll get a cuss into it.
Now I'm going to turn it down.
Would you make a motion?
I'd love to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Judith S. Ludwig and William P. Ludwig of 18 Strawberry Lane. Said special permit is under Section 174-17.1 and 174-17. Yeah. Of the zoning bylaw and Mass. General Law Section 40, Mass. General Law 48, Section 6, to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 112, Parcel 101, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. One, board has determined the applicant meets all conditions of a special permit under Mass. General Law 48, Section 6 and 9. Two, plot plan. Proposed house reconstruction for 18 Strawberry Lane, Mashpee, Mass. Prepared for William and Judith Ludwig. Scale 1 inches equals 20 feet. Date March 10th, 2023, drawn by EJB, TJB, and RAR. Checked by TB, job number 21114. Prepared by BSS Design Engineering, stamped and signed by Thomas J. Bunker. Three, building plans. Ludwig residence, 18 Strawberry Lane, Mashpee, Mass. Page 1, first-floor living area. Page 2, front and right elevations. Page 3, rear and left elevations. Page 4, second-floor living area, 31123, received on 4/7/23. First floor and second floor living area prepared by K. Marshall Works Design. Four, condition on all town department comments read in the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health.
Can I, can I make a point of order?
Sure.
I don't know why we're approving this project under two different bylaws. I understand what Attorney Corain, why he did it this way, but why are we approving it under a raise and replace or a 174-17 change, alteration, or extension?
Right. I would just, all I would ask is that you, if you do that, just approve it under 17.1 and the statute.
The state statute?
Yeah. 48, Section 6.
Right.
Yeah, but what do you think?
I just don't want to get some kind of legal issue going forward, saying that we did something wrong by approving a project under two different bylaws at the same time.
I don't think you need to approve it under 17, but.
I don't either.
Right, but I think you should approve it under 17.1, and I think the, I think you're safe approving it under this.
We don't have to approve it under the state statute. It's already.
It's your call. I mean, I.
I think it just muddies the heck out of it.
I think we just approve it under 174-17.1.
I think it's clear that if in fact it passes a town meeting, then the question that begs to be asked is, when does it go back to? When's it retroactive to?
Can't be retroactive.
Right.
I, yeah.
They can't do that.
As I say, I'm just trying to protect my.
The bottom line is, if town.
It doesn't take effect for X number of months because it has to go to.
If you get caught in the middle, it would sound to me like you'd have to come back to this board.
Right.
Maybe.
And, and, and under the state statute, be heard.
Right.
Yeah, I.
That's fine. As I said, I'm just trying to cover all my bases.
So I'm going to, if it's okay with you, Counselor, I'm going to amend my motion to strike 174-17.
Yes.
And what is the, there were two other things in Section 6 and 9. So would I, I'd strike 9?
No, 6. I think 9 is your standard special permit that you do with every, every.
So I will also strike in reference to my first condition, where I stated Sections 6 and 9. I am striking Section 6 and only including Section 9.
And I further want to note, does Attorney Corain need to withdraw his application for 174-17?
Why don't we just ask him to do so?
I am asking the board to withdraw the application under 174-17.
Why don't I make a motion first, then? I will strike my first motion. I will put it on hold. And I will, I will make a motion that we accept Attorney Corain's request to strike advertisement and his request under Section 174-17 and Section 6 in reference to his application.
That's fair.
Do we have a second, Bill?
Second.
Bill's second. Bob, how do you vote? Sharon?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Do I have to read this all over?
I just want to make it clean.
Killing me, man.
I'm not trying to overcomplicate things. I'm just trying, as I said, to cover all my bases.
All right, here we go. And I, I agree with you, but I just want to make it clean for the.
We're trying to do this right.
Yeah, no, understood.
All right. I'd like to ma, do you want me to make a motion?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Judith S. and William P. Ludwig of 18 Strawberry Lane. Said special permit is under Section 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws and Mass. General Law 48, Section 6, to raise and replace, to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and replace it with a non, with a new single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 112, Parcel 101, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. One, the board has determined the applicant meets all conditions of a special permit under Mass. General Law 48, Section 9. Two, plot plan. Proposed house reconstruction, reconstruction for 18 Strawberry Lane, Mashpee, Mass. Prepared for William and Judith Ludwig. Scale 1 inches equals 20 feet. Date March 10th, 2023, drawn by EJB, TJB, RAR. Checked by TB, job number 21114. Prepared by BSS Design Engineering, stamped and signed by Thomas J. Bunker. Three, building plan. Ludwig residence, 18 Strawberry Lane, Mashpee, Mass. Page 1, first-floor living area. Page 2, front and right elevations. Page 3, rear and left elevations. I'm sorry, page 2 was front and right elevation. Page 3 is rear and left elevation. Page 4, second-floor living area, 31123, received on 4/7/23. First floor and second floor living area prepared by K. Marshall Works Design. Number 4, condition on all town department comments read in the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health.
We have a second?
Second.
Sharon seconds. Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you there, William. It's all right.
It's okay.
It's okay. I'm just tired.
It really wasn't. No, well done. Just wanted to make sure.
Well done.
Can't come back.
I have this new procedure thing that's got me going.
Just wearing me out this time.
Ron, I see you have light reading.
This is signed. Bill just handed this. I don't know what's in there. So let's take some time.
Don't shift the messenger.
So if that's the case, Mary Ann, we may want.
Oh, you did.
We may want to ask the applicant to do it now. At the beginning. What, Mr. Chairman? The next application has the same issue that Billy raised in the last application, and you may want to ask him to withdraw at the beginning.
Good idea.
Just a recommendation.
Why is there only three names on here?
I need to sign it.
Well, your name is on it.
Well, I'm sorry.
They don't know who's going to.
Oh, that's true.
Ron is on it.
Say again?
I, I agree with the strategy.
I agree with your strategy.
Exactly.
I agree with both of you. It was a good try.
No. It was a.
Right. Well, I think, I think it probably would have come more into play if it was continued, you know, if it got continued past May 1st, so.
Exactly.
Well, once, once it gets voted on, let's say it passes, then it has to go to the Attorney General's office. And until they sign off on it, it's not official.
I don't want to talk too much about it, but there is case law as to where, where, where it begins and stops, and some of it is retroactive to the time of publication, just to let you know.
But it hasn't been published.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
It's been published.
No.
I was told it was, but maybe I'm off.
We're ready?
But again, who knows? I'm not on the. That would be an argument that we, that, that hopefully won't have to, maybe we'll deal with it, maybe we won't.
Well, maybe if, if that is a concern, maybe you want to withdraw 174-17.1 and just go with 174-17.
I don't know if I'm going to take that risk.
Okay, Brad, you're sitting on this next hearing. Sharon, would you read the last new hearing?
7 Pine Avenue. Owners Michael D. and Kristen A. Bain request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-17 of the zoning bylaws in Mass. General Law C48, Section 6, to raise an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 123, Parcel 30, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair members of the board. For the record, Attorney Christopher Corain. Procedurally, you know, given our last hearing, I would request to withdraw the applications for relief under 174-17 and 48, Section 6.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Chris Corain's request to withdraw 174-17 and 48, Section 6 from his application in reference to 7 Pine Ave.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Bill's second. Brad, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay. Thank you. So again, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Michael and Kristen Bain. They own property at 7 Pine Avenue. This is a special permit for a raise and rebuild under 174-17.1 for property located in the R3 zoning district. I always want to point out, this is not in a flood zone, not in a flood zone. So there are no conservation implications for this project or flood zone implications for this project.
It's not in Papanesett either, is it?
It is not in the Papanesett Overlay District. This is right down the street from the Papanesett Inn, so it is in the, it's in the R3, but not in the Papanesett Overlay District.
Do you own the house plans? Do you have just the front elevation?
You want?
No, is that all you have is the front elevation?
Yeah.
Okay.
A little skimpy on house plans there, Counselor. Okay, because we only have the front elevation.
Oh, because there was a, there was a, there was a.
Twenty-one. There we go.
There was a request to.
Who is Scott and share?
Yeah.
There was a request to revise the plan to show the height. So the plans that you don't, that you have
That's front elevation.
don't show the height, but these front elevations show the height and showing it in, in compliance from average grade. So that's why there's a discrepancy.
Why don't you guys take that? The hell is that?
I don't need a house plan.
I'm going to look at the site plan.
So the site plan you should have should be dated. 11/15/22. That should be the site plan you're looking at.
That's not the one on this.
I think the ones in the package are not our old ones. The one that Mr. Bonvy has is the correct site plan.
July 25th, 2022.
11/15/22?
Yes.
I got 25th.
We got it. Should be 11/15.
What have you think?
11/15. Oh, man, is the revision better than that.
No, that's the right house plan.
Where you added roof drains as a revision.
Drywells, that's it. So the only change from what you have to the revised plan is that there are drywells shown on the 11/15 plan. Nothing else has changed about the site plan.
Right.
So that was the only change, that we made sure the drywells were included on the, on that revision. So this lot is 11,000 square feet, has 100 feet of frontage, so the lot is non-conforming for the R3 zoning district. The house itself has two existing non-conformities. It is non-conforming to the front yard setback where it's at 30.6, and it is non-conforming to the rear setback where it is 8.9 feet. Otherwise, to both side yards, it is conforming, and it is conforming as to lock coverage at 15.7%. The proposal will be eliminating all non-conformities. So the new house will conform to all of your existing zoning requirements. So the front yard setback will be going from 30.6 to 40.2, a conforming condition. The rear yard setback will be going from 8.9 to 31.6, a conforming condition. Your lock coverage is increasing, but only to 18.4%, which is still under your 20% maximum.
You're removing all non-conforming?
No, you're not. Because your minimum lot frontage is at 100 feet.
I'm sorry. I meant dimensional non-conformities as to setbacks. So we're not increasing the.
Still have a non-conforming.
Right, we're not increasing the lot size, we're not increasing the frontage, but all, all setbacks are being, non-conformities are being eliminated.
Understood.
That's, I buy apologies. Um, but yes, we're not changing the frontage, we're not changing the, the lot area. But.
You in the flood zone?
It is not in the flood zone. Not in the flood zone. Sorry? Sorry?
How many bedrooms in this house?
Uh, currently, three bedrooms.
But the septic design is for...
Three.
For three?
Yes, three, existing three proposed.
Yeah, three hundred and thirty gallons.
Did you look at this house?
Yeah, I've looked at it in the past. Not recently, but when we filed it...
I think we have more than that.
Has the Board of Health looked at this plan?
Yeah, where's the Board of Health?
Well, the floor plans show three bedrooms, approved septic for three bedrooms, no comment.
You just got trumped.
Or one? Two.
No comment.
Three? I'm surprised the Board of Health didn't pick up on it. They got doors on the room downstairs. They call it music room, but there's doors on it.
Board of Health didn't have a problem.
Uh, how big's the opening?
Doesn't matter, six foot, it's got doors on it.
Got a door.
Still got doors on it.
So it's not really a case of opening, it's a closed-off opening.
The argument might be if there's no windows in there, it's not legally...
There's no windows and no climate.
David, any comment on that?
There's no windows, so it can't legally be a bedroom, I guess.
I do not.
No.
That might be the argument, there's no windows.
Right.
Yeah, I would just...
Got to have a window, doesn't it?
I would just defer to the Board of Health.
Needs an egress.
Right.
Board of Health has their problem, I don't have a problem with it.
Me neither.
That's what I would say, I would defer to the Board of Health.
Conservation is no issue.
There's no conservation issue, so again, the two existing nonconformities, the front and rear, will be eliminated, so we will have a conforming house to the front, conforming house to the back, and conforming house to both sides. As noted, there are drywells being installed on the property to capture any roof runoff. There are no new nonconformities being created. There is sufficient parking, there's a paved parking existing in the front of the house, we're not making any changes to that, that will continue to supply the parking for the home. It's going to be building code compliant, this house, I guess, my understanding is it was actually an old motel back in the day. If you go look at it, it does have multiple entrances on one side, so I don't know all the history, but that's what I was told, but it was built in approximately nineteen fifty-three. Now we're going to have a, it will be a building code compliant, so, and if you look at the surrounding area across the street, I supplied the pictures, it's consistent with development on Pine Avenue. We do meet the height requirement, I know that was another question that was raised, so the front elevation that was supplied this week to the board does show that we meet the height requirement, so it will be, it's under the thirty-five feet, that's a maximum allowed from average grade. So, no new nonconformities, sufficient parking, and I would suggest that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, given the fact that we are eliminating the front inside, front and rear nonconformities, we're not creating any new nonconformities, there will be a new Title V septic system installed, and we have, you know, roof runoff contained through drywells. Mark Dibb from Cape Ann Islands is with me to answer any questions, and I'll turn it over to the board.
I have a quickie if I could, and it's going to be real quick, and it's probably not on base. Historically, we've been saying one of our big things on these razor replaces is innovative systems, right, meaning D-nites, right? In the last two applications, we've listed in Title V, right? So we all know, or we all presume, or most of us presume, in the next two, three, four years, we're going to have to do innovative systems. Does that, I mean, why aren't we following that procedure? We've had several applications of razor replaces that are D-nites, and yet the last two applications have not been D-nites.
And that's the Board of Health, so I guess it's not our purview, but I'm just trying to understand, because that's one of the things we've said to people against razor replaces, hey, right? We can't say that in the last two applications. I can, I, a general answer is, I think, when you look at the first date on these plans, I believe you said it was July of twenty-two, as an engineering firm, we've been recommending people put IAs in, I just, I just think the timing, you know, before something goes in the ground, we'll see if they can do it, but I don't want that to be a condition.
People that ask me, I've been saying that, and I no longer am going to say that, because of these two applications, really.
You know, I don't think it would be a condition of this thing, but I think we'll be recommending that they do, because they might have to dig it back up in three years.
That's the only reason why I ask, we have, I have no rights to, as far as sitting on this board, to say you can or cannot, or should or should not, I'm just asking.
And I think you're going to see that, maybe not these two projects, because they are outside the flood zone, but any project that probably, that may get approved by conservation is probably going to have an IA system.
Thank you, don't want to spend too much time.
I was just going to say, even if you were to put in a D-night type system, if in fact the plan going forward for the town is sewer or wastewater treatment...
Then I think it's a ninety-nine percent shot that there's going to be no sewer in this area, many others, but whatever. I get you, I get you. I just wanted to understand it, because one of my pitches has been, hey, you know, code compliant, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, right? Hey, you know, D-night systems, right, or innovative systems, right?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to...
Got it, thank you.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Sharon, there's a couple of emails from, actually, from Chris, we got in the height.
All right, I have one here from Chris Carain, dated four eleven twenty-three. Hi, Mary Ann, attached, please find the front elevation plan, shown the height of the home from the average grade at twenty-eight point nine and a half feet, under the thirty-five maximum allowed by zoning.
Looking at one dated Monday the tenth.
Okay, I'm looking.
And, let's see, what is this?
Monday the tenth.
Two fifty P.M. Hi, Mary Ann, yes, unfortunately, the package of plans put together by the architect included the old site plan. There was a revised site plan that includes the drywells. I've asked CNI to supply those to you. As far as the height, it is somewhat confusing, but the measurement would start from around elevation twenty point three feet, which is the first floor, and so at elevation forty point eight feet attic subfloor, the building is only twenty feet in height to the attic subfloor. I've asked the architect to provide a clearer measurement of the height, but it should meet the thirty-five foot maximum allowed. That was on Monday the tenth at two fifty P.M. As a follow-up from Lee Yang, Oak Hill Architects, and says, hi, Mark, measured the top of the foundation wall to the ridge of the main gambrel roof is twenty-five feet eleven and a half inches. The larger perpendicular gambrel roof is twenty-seven feet eleven inches at the ridge. So these are correct still?
It's three right now.
And I said, the elevation plan that I provided shows the, shows the height from the average grade.
So all that is on the new plan?
Correct.
Good. Did you have question, comment?
No, we're also. We took a vote amongst ourselves. No, we're also, we had a couple of questions, but we satisfied us.
Let's see, anything to read in, Sharon?
I read in Board of Health, and there's no comments for conservation.
Yeah, I've got nothing. Anybody? Brad, anything on this? Scott, you good?
Good.
Anybody in the audience? Come right up. And give us your name and address and...
I'm Dee Sock Beeson, two ninety-four Shore Drive.
And my name is Henry Sock Beeson, and my wife and I are the owners at two ninety-four Shore Drive, which is right next door. Yeah, it's right next door. We're generally in support of the application, I don't see any, any major issues. You've answered some of my questions tonight, we have met with, was it Mary Ann, who was very helpful, and also Dave.
David.
Dave. And we did ask questions about the, the size of the drywells, or the drywells. We looked at the plans and it seemed to us that there was quite a bit of impervious surface, not only on the roof, but also from the patios and such, and I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but at the corner of Shore Drive and Pine Avenue, it's been a historic area of flooding during heavy rain events.
No, I totally agree with you.
And in fact, I spoke, I think, with this committee back when my neighbor across the street built, because all the water in that whole neighborhood used to settle in those two lots, and when they were built up, we requested relief, and you required, I believe, drywells in those houses, but I don't think it solved the problem. I know that when we were there last summer, we noticed that during a heavy rain event, the water would gather in that intersection to the height of, I don't know, up to your knees.
Yeah, well, the issue is not necessarily coming off of the lot, but it's coming down the streets from all ways.
Right.
That is the low spot in that whole area.
It is.
I'm not mistaken.
But he does, I'm impressed, you do raise a question about impervious surfaces such as patios.
Yes, there's some large patios.
We're taking care of roof drainage, but if you look at this huge patio that is impervious...
That's in the, I believe that's in the back of the house, correct?
Well, it's, it's toward our... It's toward us as well, I mean, it runs the whole length of the back of the house, as I understand it, as I recall. I know that there's been a resubmission of one of the pages, we had commented on the drywells and also the height. And I guess in reaction to that, another drawing was submitted, but we haven't seen that, I don't know, you know, what it provides.
Well, there's the front elevation right there, in front of Bob. Bob, right here, it has a, not on the board. If you want to put that, if you want to see, that's what the front of the house looks like, and it's like almost seven feet below the maximum.
Yeah, and like I said, I mean, we would just...
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, we were, you see this, is that the one that we looked at? I think it is. But you couldn't see, you couldn't see on there what the total height was.
They didn't have it, they just, they just did that.
Yeah.
This is a new plan, you're right. This one shows the total height of twenty-eight and a half.
Yeah.
Could I ask a design engineer question, please? There looks to be a large proposed patio, impervious. It would seem to me relatively easily to, easy to pitch it to a given area, some type of structure with an additional drywall.
I agree.
Or you do the drainage calculations, twenty-five year storm, one or two drywells pick up that impervious material, impervious area into those drywells, so then you've got the roof, you've got proposed patio areas picked up, anything that leaves a lot at that site should be very minimal, I would think at that point, other than your existing driveway, and it's an existing driveway, so would that, would that help you, sir, you think?
Yeah, I don't really think that there's much more that you could do.
I think you're right.
But I don't know that just saying a drywall covers it, because...
I guess I should have said it this way, he's the engineer, I'm not, please figure out, devise a plan, whether it's a drywall or whatever it may be, to pick up the drainage or the water that falls on that proposed patio area and collect it appropriately and disperse it into the soil, whatever that design may be.
How would you like to make a ruling on that?
Well, I think, I think if I were asked to make a motion, that can be done prior to the application of the bill. And would you think, sir, a twenty-five year storm study would be adequate?
We can provide that.
Okay. I'm not, as one person, and if I were asked to make a motion, I would condition it on you supplying those calculations and preparing that plan prior to the civil and building permit. I have no problem with that. I'll rely on your stamp to say it's a twenty-five year storm, and we'll collect a twenty-five year on any, any flow or that flow that falls under that proposed patio area, and is collected and dispersed into the ground.
And would that be true for the roof area as well?
It's already done for the roof.
The roof is already taken care of.
See, the roof area is taken care of through drywells, but you picked up a very good point, sir, and that is the patio was not, is not picked up and collected.
Okay. Yeah, I'm happy with that. The, the other, the other points, I don't know whether there's anything that this body can do about it, but I'll, I'll mention it. I noticed on the plans that the air conditioners are within twenty feet of, well, I don't know how far it is, but it's, it's on our side of the house, and it's a large, it's a fairly large structure, and in the summertime, those things are going on all the time. I'm wondering if there's any way that we can have some kind of relief from that in the form either a vegetation that's planted along the line, or some kind of a wall that's put there to cut back on the amount of noise that's issued by the air conditioning.
Chris, could you agree to do something?
Like a...
Chris, I'm not, I'm not asking you to, you know, put the whole thing in a structure.
Like a three-foot type surround.
Yeah.
Would, would surround type thing?
What about shrubs? With shrubs?
Shubs don't really, that...
They don't really do it.
You won't be able to see it, but...
You can hear it.
It's about noise, so if they put a...
I mean, it's just, you know, it's...
The fence doesn't really block the noise, it just reflects it. It just reflects it.
Sir, would you rather see plantings or some type of...
I'd rather see, I'd rather see some kind of a solid structure.
Plantings will absorb sound and look better than a fence. A fence will just deflect it.
Against the house and maybe back.
It's not really going to block it.
Yeah, I agree.
I've dealt with it before.
Actually, I'd rather see natural vegetation than a fence.
Your wife wins.
She's always right.
I got that one down, too.
She's the five-bed kappa, none.
Would that make you satisfied, too, if you...
Yes. I'm sure we'll regret this, but no, that's fine.
So on three sides, are we saying?
Yeah, I'd get, we'll get privated or something.
Some type of vegetation, three sides to block sound as best as possible.
They're going to be landscaping the whole house, there's not that much more for them to do.
Yeah.
Yep. And it's depicted as AC unit.
During, during construction, since we've got you guys here, is there plans to have a temporary pole in place rather than air, rather than generators? On one of the streets behind us last summer, there was construction undertaken, and they were running generators all summer long, and...
As one member, I can't help you with that.
As a builder?
Yeah.
I never do generators, I always do a temp service.
I think that's common.
I don't think that's, there's a house going up on my street, they're drywalling now. They're still running off generators, they haven't had any service, and I can understand Eversource is so far behind, maybe they can't get Eversource there, but that's a...
I don't know if this board would have a right to condition.
I don't think that's a requirement by building or else. If they want to have generators, they can do it.
Well, how long did it take you?
Generators, and then, but, you know, you put your application in for Eversource.
Took months, didn't it?
Last winter was horrendous with Eversource and National Grid getting services.
Oh, yeah, don't...
Yeah.
I had to wait, like, three months to get...
I applied for gas service last summer, I didn't have it hooked up till late end of January for a house.
Well, I don't know when they're planning on building this structure, I mean, if it wasn't in the summertime, I don't think it would be an issue.
Most builders and most quality builders are going to put a temp service in. Very rare do you see a builder that does, works up a generator.
My dad was a builder, so I'm familiar with what you're talking about.
So unless they're having an issue with Eversource.
Especially with razor replaces, usually standard.
Yeah, usually with our temp service, they usually hook them up fairly quick. They usually not wait more than two weeks for a temp, or do you have to wait for a temp service?
I didn't have to wait a temp.
I don't think we should go in there.
Okay, all right.
It's not a zoning issue, but...
I think a lot of people...
It never hurts to ask.
We will help you wherever we can, I think this is, this we can do very much for you.
All right, well, you know, it's just that we have, we have renters coming in, in, you know, for those two months, July and August.
No, it's annoying.
Yeah.
It's like listening to a leak leak.
Well, I'm not sure we're gonna have renters. I mean, we're gonna tell them.
We're gonna have to inform them about things, yeah.
Well, they, you know, they, there's a shut-off time at night.
There might also be an association. You might have an association thing that says you...
Oh, but it's voluntary. It's not, you know, not what you can do.
But it's not a zoning, we can't really vote on it.
Okay. The, there are a number of trees between the two properties, some of which, I mean, these properties have been there for a long time. And to be honest with you, I don't know exactly if the line is properly placed with those trees. And is it possible to find out from the owner whether they've had a survey done and whether we can locate that line?
Are they your, do they buy your property?
Yeah.
Yes.
Have you had, have you done it?
No.
Is it the same line?
I don't know either. I mean, when we bought it, it was a long time ago.
Well, my dad built it, like, in the forties, and then we bought it from my dad, and, yeah.
It's not a lot of money to get it.
So, we did, for our project, we did perform a boundary survey, and all the way up and down the streets, there's a, we did actually find an iron pipe at the corner of your lot and Butterlot, as well as this one, and then, you know, as you see, a licensed surveyor did stamp this, so it's not conservation.
You could hire an engineering firm to put corner bounds in on your two corners that are butt stairs.
I talked to an engineer, I talked to a surveyor, and he said to look to...
Well, he's already done a lot of work, so it sounds to me like he's got a baseline out there. He could get it done relatively easy for you, but I can't tell you what the price would be. I would recommend talking to that. Tell me, you probably put your corners...
I just wanna make sure that there are, gonna have to be trees taken down. In fact, there's a very old cypress right in the middle of that lot, which is gonna have to go. And our trees, you know, lean over their property, and I just wanna make sure that when we cut them, it's, you know, in the right place.
These are not zoning issues, right. We can't help you with this.
All right, all right. The septic system that's in place, that's being put in, is right next to where ours is located, and I just wanna bring that up. I don't know if anybody's looked at it in relationship...
That would be brought up to the board of health.
You're in front of the wrong board.
We just do zoning.
Okay.
And I only brought up a board of health issue for other reasons, not for that.
Yeah.
Well, that was it. Thank you very much.
Do you guys have any...
We hope that we've settled or helped you with some of your issues.
Yeah, and I appreciate your courtesy.
Well, that's what we're here to do, to see if we can help the butters and applicants.
The only other question I had was, when lights are installed, outside lights, are those required to be downward-facing lights?
Once again, not a zoning issue.
We do not have, it's not a zoning issue per se, but we do not have what's blackout in this town, or whatever that language is. Many towns would have to deal with it.
That's very easily handled by talking to the neighbors.
Right.
And saying, "Hey, help me out here. We gotta live beside each other."
Yeah, we did that with our neighbor across the street who had a ten-foot-high lighthouse.
It's amazing how easy it works sometimes.
It does. In fact, we did talk to him. He was fine.
So hopefully, we've helped you, hopefully we've helped the applicant, and we've protected the town, so.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anything? Oh, boy. Anything else we have?
No.
Any other comments? Any final comments before we...
I believe we did.
I think we did, didn't we? Sharon, we read all the comments, didn't we?
I read the comments. It's not in a wetlands jurisdiction, and it's been, floor plans show three bedrooms, subject to three bedrooms. No comment.
All right, Ron, would you make a motion to close the public comment?
Certainly. I'd like to make a motion that we close the public comment for Seven Pine Avenue.
Bill seconds. Brad, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, any further discussion before we vote on this project? Bearing none? Ron, would you make a motion on this project?
Certainly. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit. Well, first of all, we're again, one seventy-four seventeen one, one seventy-four seventeen.
No, we withdrew those.
We withdrew it.
We're gonna do a hearing.
I'm not sure of that.
Okay.
And we already made that one.
So then, in my motion, I have to strike that, and I have to strike that. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to issue a special permit to Michael and Christine Bain of Seven Pine Ave. Said special permit is under section one seventy-four seventeen one of the zoning bylaw, Master and Laws, forty-eight, section six, to raise a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling and property located in our three zoning district, map one twenty-three parcel thirty, mastery mass with the following conditions. One, the board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Master and Laws, forty-eight, section nine. Two, site plan prepared for Michael and Christine Bain, project seven pine half mastery mass, sheet number one of one, date, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, revised, eleven fifteen twenty-two, add roof drains drawn by M.D., checked by R.L.R., prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, drawing title, site and septic plan, no increase in flow, stamped and signed by Mark D. Dibb, civil number four five nine three seven, professional engineering and Matthew C. Costa, number five two two eight two, professional land survey. Three, architectural plan prepared for the Bain residence, seven pine half mastery mass, A one hundred, basement floor plan, A one oh one, first floor plan, A one oh two, second floor plan, A one oh three, roof plan, A three hundred, front elevation, exterior elevation, A three oh one, side exterior elevation, A three oh two, rear exterior elevation, A three oh three, side exterior elevation, prepared by Oak Hill Architects, issued three ten twenty twenty-three. Condition on all town department comments read in the record. Prior to the applicant submitting for a building permit, he shall submit to the zoning enforcement officer a twenty-five-year drainage calculation and design to collect all water for a twenty-five year storm that is collected on the proposed patio area and shall be dispersed into the ground. Number six, subject to the applicant providing and installing on three sides of the proposed AC units, that would be away from the house and front and back, so against the house, it would not be plantings. And said he would be installing plantings to reduce sound on the abutting properties.
Do we have a second? Bill?
Second.
Okay. Bill seconds. Brad, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Another good project.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Nice job, Ron.
Excuse me?
Nice job, Ron.
Here you go, buddy. Thank you, sir. Do I check this one? Check to be approved. You're welcome. I'm outta here for this one.
Okay.
Why are you outta here?
Because he didn't sit on the...
Oh, I thought you were scared.
Were you gonna stay for the week?
He's scared.
Sure.
He wasn't on the original, wasn't involved.
I don't think I was either.
I wasn't either.
Doesn't matter, you can...
I was here. I just used my saw. I don't think I was here.
One of his attorneys is Mr. Harrow.
Scott?
He didn't check, huh?
Oh, okay.
So because of that fact, he...
Testing you.
I'm back.
If I wasn't involved in this, do I...
No, no, no. I don't think that's the issue. I think the...
Which is he has a conflict.
He has a conflict with the...
Okay, just checking. Just wanna make sure I wasn't supposed to leave it.
Yep.
Because I wasn't here, really.
Clear this room out quick.
Do we get everything back? It's coming. We all sat there? Okay, we'll wait till Bill leaves, so everybody can vote on it.
Just consider me left.
Take your time, Bill, but hurry up.
I was hurried.
You have this, Ron?
I do. I mean, I was looking for that specific document.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. You were reading my mind.
Excellent. All right, Sharon, would you read the first other business?
Review and discussion of open meeting law complaints relative to March eighth, two thousand twenty-three, meeting relative to two-two-eight Waiting Place Road special permit. Complaints, Beth Andrew Berry, Barbara Lynn Barbie, Glenn McCarthy, and Barbara Riley, vote to authorize town council to respond to all four complaints.
Okay, I'm gonna read a synopsis of the complaint. The complaints assert that the referenced executive session was improper because the litigation cited as the basis, therefore, had concluded with land court's issuance, the remand order slash judgment. And the Barbie complaint alleges a second violation based on alleged improper email slash communication among board members outside the public meeting. So my first question to everybody is, has everybody read the four open meeting law complaints? Are you familiar with?
I read. I have.
I read.
Yeah, okay. Any questions or comments regarding it?
I have none.
Well, the next question is important. Has any board member had any improper email slash communications with any other board member outside the public meeting?
Absolutely not.
Not me.
Nope.
I have not.
Nope.
Never have in my whole time on this board.
Bob?
No.
That answers that. Any further discussion? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on all four, one by one. So, Ron, would you make a motion to, first of all, close the public meeting?
Certainly. So I'd like, hmm, I just...
Is it the public comment or the public meeting?
No.
The public comment.
So, anybody else have any public comment? I guess probably not. I would like to make a motion that we close public comment in reference to open meeting law complaints.
Scott.
Okay. George seconds. Bob, how do you vote? Brad?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so the public comment section of this particular other business is closed. So we've got four motions to make. Let's do the first one. Ron, if you would?
I'd like to make a motion that the board authorized town council to issue a written response relative to the disposition of open meeting law complaint filed by Glenn McCarthy on April third, twenty twenty-three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Sharon seconds. Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, let's do the second motion.
I would like a motion, I would like to make a motion that the board authorizes, town authorized town council to issue a written response relative to the disposition of the open meeting law complaint filed by Beth Andrew Berry on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
George second. Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, let's do the third one.
I'd like to make a motion that the board authorized town council to issue a written response relative to the disposition of the open meeting law complaint filed by Barbara Lynn Barbie on April fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, Sharon seconds. Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And the last one.
I'd like to make a motion that the board authorized town council to issue a written response relative to the disposition of the open meeting law complaint filed by Barbara Riley on April sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, Sharon second. Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Brad?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, I think that concludes that part of it. Okay. Sharon, would you read the next other business?
I'd like to make a motion, move to approve the executive session meeting minutes dated March eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
That's a motion, so I'll, do we have a second?
Second.
Brad seconds. Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
George?
I wasn't there, so I'm standing.
Sharon?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I'd like to make another motion, move to approve the meeting minutes of March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
Do we have a second? Anybody? Okay, Brad seconds.
Yes.
Okay, Bob, you vote yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Sharon? Scott? Ron?
Yes.
Yes.
Bill?